Yep, we're now recording to the cloud.
Thank you. Magic phrase. Please proceed.
Thank you. So, welcome everybody who's joining us. This is the first meeting for our twenty-four, twenty-five budget process and budget message. And so I just want to make sure that everybody is able to see my screens. I've just changed over and so this, this current slide should show what we are going to be going over today, which starts with the budget process overview, our countywide budget message and our service districts budget message. Is this something that you all see right now?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Um, moving forward, so um, local budget law is what drives this entire budgeting process for the county. And, and it's not just a few months that we're working on this. This is something that takes, it's an annual process. We start with the budget preparation and that is work that is done by staff. And then we go into the approval process, which involves you all as the budget committee. And then it moves forward for adoption to the board. And then there's the execution part, which again goes back to staff. So the actual preparation portion of all of this takes us about six months to complete. And then the, the execution process is something that's happening all year long. So the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, as soon as July one kicks off, we're executing it and we're, we're maintaining it and evaluating it on a day-to-day basis. The purpose of all of this is to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible and that we are transparent with the entirety of our budget and our budget process. It enables the public, the taxpayers, investors, everybody involved to know how our budget is being administered by the county. So the budget committee roles and responsibilities, and I'm gonna apologize because I just kicked this off and I am stepping on Andy's toes. And so I'm gonna turn this over now to our Budget and Finance Director, Andy Sullivan.
I'm not gonna say anything. I was gonna let you keep, keep going there. I appreciate your intro. No, thank you, Assistant County Manager Monica Steele. I'll kind of pick up here on the, some of the budget, budget committee roles and responsibilities. As Monica was mentioning, the Board of Commissioners appoints five budget committee members who serve for three-year term. Some of the primary duties of the budget committee include hearing the budget message, which we're doing today, consider all the various factors during the proposed budget and ultimately approve the budget. Upon approval of the budget, the appointed budget committee role is completed and the board will hold a public hearing on June twelfth. At the conclusion of the hearing on the twelfth, the board adopts the budget. Next slide. Thank you. Some of the services that are required by law are listed in front of you. And as you can see, these are some of the more, you know, vital components to the county. All of these services are very unique and complicated in nature. And many variables are considered when prioritizing where and how the county needs to budget resources. And these are done in tandem with county staff. Next slide, thanks. So here's kind of the layout of the, the budget document, the format itself. This is nearly a seven-hundred-page document, for those of you who are lucky enough to get a hard copy of, of this big document. So just kind of in general terms, how it's kind of laid out, I'm not gonna touch on every single one of these, but as you kind of get into more of the, you know, the lion's share of the document, when we start going into the statistical and supporting section, general information about the county as an organization, as well as an overview about the county as a community, describes the budgeted fund structure, the functional areas, an overview of the general fund, what services funded primarily by either discretionary or dedicated resources, policies and the board goals and long-range financial plans that drive the budgeting process. The financial summary provides charts and tables to explain visually the resources and expenditures that make up the twenty-four, twenty-five budget year in comparison to prior years' actuals. And from there, kind of delves deeper into the, the functional areas, some of the limited inactive budgets, and then the appendix to refer to for different kinds of terms and definitions. And with that, I'll pass it back over to our Assistant County Manager Steele to go over the budget message.
Thank you, Andy. And also, just in regards to the appendix section, this is also where you're gonna find the work plans that include the goals and measures for the various departments. And so that is at the end of the document as well. So as we get started on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget message, or before we get started, I just want to confirm if there's any questions from anybody. And I'm gonna rely on Commissioner Thompson, because I am unable to see if anybody is raising their hands right now.
I see no raised hands. If I, if that's an error, please speak up. Okay, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So as Dawn mentioned, there are a number of you who assist us through this process and we appreciate you all greatly. And so our Citizen Committee members include from District One, Danell Davis, from District Two, Tita Montero, District Three, David Oger, District Four, Gretchen Allen, and District Five, Clara Struth, who is our newest Budget Committee member. And then, of course, we have our Board of Commissioners, Chair Quila, Vice Chair Banks, Commissioner Toyoka, Commissioner Webb, and Commissioner Thompson, who is gracious enough to chair today's Budget Committee meeting. This is also an endeavor that we couldn't do without our management team, as well as many of their staff who assist them in this process. And so some of the newest members that we have on our team that got to have this experience for the first time this year include our new Budget and Finance Director, Andy Sullivan, our new Facilities Manager, Matthew Gerber. Rebecca Cameron was here briefly at the beginning of last year from our HR department. And then we also have Amanda Gladix, who has worked for the four H and Extension Office for a number of years, but she has kind of taken over the budget process role on behalf of Tammy Olds from four H and Extension, who has retired. And I'm gonna go ahead now and turn it over to Dawn, our County Manager, as he kind of sets the tone for how this budget process came to be this year.
Thank you, Monica. I'm just gonna look to Commissioner Thompson. Can you hear me? Okay, Commissioner? Okay, thank you. Good morning, everybody. I want to thank you for your time. Thank you for all of your expertise and energy that you'll be putting into the budget process. I'm gonna take a little time just to kind of tell the story of where the county is. And so I do have slides, but as is my habit, I don't always read off the slides and I may just tangentially refer to them. But when I'm all done speaking, hopefully I've told kind of a cogent story. The one thing that I'll start with is that being a public sector manager means that no day is alike and it is never boring. And I think over the last two years, and certainly over the last year, there has been a number of challenges and opportunities for the county that we have been engaged with very actively. And some of them are, are moving the needle in terms of the safety, the livability and the sustainability of the community. And at the same time, others are creating a direct challenge for us, maintaining some of those services and meeting the service levels of the community as we move forward. I'm gonna talk a lot about the challenges in just a few minutes, but I want to talk about some of the opportunities and some of the positive things that have been happening with the county. And when I say county, I really mean the entire community. I believe that counties are just one service provider that is essential to provide all the services that a community needs. And we do that through direct services, but we also do that through collaboration. And the collaboration isn't just with other public sector agencies, it's with the nonprofit sector, it's with the business sector, it's with the civic sector, as well as, as the religious. And we put a lot of energy and effort into formalizing, strengthening these interconnectivities between all these different sectors of the community, because we acknowledge that the services and the service challenges that are in the community require us to act with, to act with some coordinated muscle movement as we try to make an impact on the community. And I will say, you know, COVID started this, this kind of collaboration, but it continues today. And I think that's what the future holds for us, is that every organization, whether it's cities, counties, special districts, nonprofit agencies, we all need each other to be successful. And so I'm very gratified by the partnership ethos that's been reinforced over the last several years. And I know that with our, the leadership of our board, that the county's efforts will continue in that area. So that's a big win for the county and for the whole community. And so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the fact that, if you can go on to the next slide. A lot of what the progress is o- over the last year is really what I call civic barn raising, because no one organization holds all of the resources, all the supplies, all the expertise to get things done. And we're tackling some pretty significant challenges, whether it's the homeless challenge, childcare, behavioral health care, addiction treatment, you know, environmental issues, economic issues. All of these issues require a whole community to come together and then identify what resources every entity has, what, what they can contribute, and then try to weave that into a cogent response. And there's been some amazing work done over the last years that I think are reflective in services to the community. I think you're seeing a lot of capacity being built in service to the homeless community. You're seeing a lot of innovative efforts regarding the economic development, environmental. And you're just seeing agencies helping each other. One of the things we benefited from was, was the ARPA dollars, which came out, out of the federal COVID spending. And the county received just about seven-point-eight million dollars. And we've certainly been spending that in a, in a very diverse and very community-oriented way, dealing with some of the challenges within public health, which was the originating factor for those funds, but also investing in the infrastructure of the county and the infrastructure of our community partners. And so in the Other Opportunities Fund, we have highlighted where, where some of those resources have been going. And again, I think it's a testament to the board that really wanted to have these resources touch every corner of the community and in those priority areas. Next slide. So besides all the positives and all the great community initiatives that the county is certainly involved in, there's the day-in and day-out work that I just want to recognize the, you know, nearly three-hundred county employees that are carrying the torch every day, problem-solving, providing quality services, and always looking at ways for the county to manage our relevance with the community better. Managing our relevance is really important to me, because if a government's not relevant, then we have some major problems. And you see a lot of those problems in some other communities, and that's just something we do not want to experience here. So there's a lot of great work that goes on every day for what I would term those more, you know, regular duties, those more regular services that are, are often invisible to a lot of our community unless it's something that you access. If you want to record a property, then you get to know the clerk's office. If you are having issues with your voter registration, you obviously also get to know the clerk's office. And so, so, but there's just great work that gets done. And these are great ambassadors for our organization and for the community. So I'm gonna talk about some of the challenges, because these challenges are real and they are something that, that we are gonna need help addressing. And if we don't get help addressing them, and when I say help, I mean mainly from our state legislators. If we don't receive help, then the organization will have a plan to make some pretty dramatic cuts into our services and service levels. So I'm gonna go back a little bit and recognize that the county has been in a deficit spending mode for the last several years. This was planned. We had a large fund balance reserve. And when the HCP and the economy and some other factors started challenging us, we knew that those reserves were there to help us get through. The whole notion was it's not sustainable over time, but we wanted it to provide the runway so that we could fully engage the legislature on revenue replacement for the, for the HCP, as well as to hopefully get some redress on some of the impacts of tourism that are taking place in some of those high-volume tourism counties. And I'll talk a little bit about that. So, so where we are to today has been, has been a plan. The county has been making a lot of adjustments and preparing ourselves for what might happen really in the budget preparation process for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. We anticipate at the end of the twenty-two-four, twenty-five budget, the county will still be above the thirty percent fund balance goal that the board has set. Now, the minimum is twenty percent, but just, we need to have flexibility. And so thirty percent is, is kind of where we aim for. We anticipate ending the twenty-two-four, twenty-five budget year, you know, north of that thirty percent. We, right now, we're thinking that we're somewhere around thirty-three percent, but there's also gonna be a lot of effort to actually increase what our position is. So a lot's gonna happen during twenty-two-four, twenty-five. It's not reflected in the twenty-two-four, twenty-five budget, but the county has already been looking at, at where the general fund subsidy goes. We've been looking at the fee structures, making sure that the fees are covering the full cost of service. We're looking at managing during the year differently by keeping vacant positions open, doing everything we can to maximize that beginning fund balance. Because what happens in January of twenty-two-five is that the legislature will be meeting and there's been ongoing conversations with the Governor's Office and with the CFTLC Counties, which is the Council for Forest Trust Land, counties, which are the counties that are most impacted by the HCP, about what that revenue replacement strategy might look like. We're also engaged with our lobbyists and with legislators about a legislative concept to modify the transient lodging tax distribution to allow more flexibility for counties. Can you go back one slide, Monica? I'm sorry that I'm not keeping to the slides, but trying to get some more flexibility on the transient lodging tax. And so that's, those are two big, big pushes for, for the county and very important. We're not resting on, on our laurels, thinking that those things are gonna absolutely happen. We have to plan as though they won't happen. And so we will be going through the exercise during the twenty-two-four, twenty-five year of what kind of expenditure reductions would we need to make if those revenues don't come to us? And, you know, I'm always, I'm not an optimist, but I'm not a pessimist either. I kind of try to fall in what is most likely. What's most likely as we move forward is there will be some select expenditure reductions and there will be some help from the state on the revenue side. I think the state understands that there are a handful of counties that are majorly impacted both by the HCP and by tourism. And I'm, I'm gonna be pragmatically optimistic that somebody will, will kind of help us and will see the light and provide a runway for us so that we can continually manage the organization. Some of the other things that are challenges is the cost of healthcare and prescriptions for the adults in custody. As you know, when someone is in the county custody, and that means in the jail, we have a responsibility, both legally and morally, to make sure that they're taken care of. And so providing those services and that, that healthcare is a local expense. There's been a lot of effort to try to make eligibility for folks that are in custody for, for, for programs such as OHP. And those efforts continue, both at the federal level and at the state level. Another cost factor and challenge, which will be ongoing, is it, is the public employee retirement system costs. And then, of course, we have the highest per capita homelessness rate, and that is a, is just a continual challenge that the cities, the county, and a lot of our nonprofit religious and civic partners are all working on. So go ahead, Monica. So as we say this, part of the capacity that the county has to have is just not to collaborate with our partners, but we have to advocate for ourselves effectively. And that's something that hasn't always been at the pinnacle of our, of our priorities. And so over the last couple of years, we've invested resources in federal and state lobbyists, Commissioner Thompson with her leadership down at AOC, and other board members through their partnerships and their liaison responsibilities. We have been advocating much more effectively, not just for the county's interest, but I would say for the community's interest. And sometimes it's beyond the community, it's for the coastal community interest. And that's gonna continue. We've, we've received additional funding from the state to address some of the homeless challenges because of our advocacy and our, I mean, the board's advocacy. We continue to get grant monies. Sheriff's Office has been successful getting grant monies to replace the record management system, which impacts all the cities also. We have an aggressive federal agenda with a number of priorities on it. So part of what we have been doing is looking ahead and saying, how do we position ourselves for these conversations that we know we're gonna have with the decision-makers that, that, that will be consequential for the county? And so, so that's where a lot of our effort has also been going. Next slide, please. So, you know, as I always say, the budget is just a point in time. How we manage the budget says a lot about what our financial position is moving forward. We generally spend about ninety percent of the appropriated levels, and that's by design. So at, at the federal level, oftentimes, they spend a hundred percent because they're not gonna get it back if they don't spend it. Here, we actually expect it to come back. And we give direction to our departments that we expect them to not spend all of their appropriations. Now, for some, that can be a little bit easier, because they have vacancies during the fiscal year. But we require them to make some of those tough decisions about what they're actually going to need and what they're gonna spend. And so this way, this is the way that, that the county maintains those fund balances. The board has been providing great leadership for the county, and this is generational leadership, but certainly the current board has been providing that also, that they want to have enough reserves so that the county isn't in a panic mode and having to tear down in the process of trying to really respond to what we know always happens, which is the unexpected. The unexpected always happens within government. And so the reserve just helps us to deal with the unexpected. So that thirty, twenty to thirty percent range is where we will, we will maintain. Thirty percent's way more comfortable for me personally, as we've seen things happen. And again, based on the projection models for the end of twenty-four, twenty-five, so the end of next fiscal year will still be at around thirty-three percent. So that's the runway that we're using to allow the legislature to hopefully help us figure out how much do we need to reduce and how much will there be in revenue replacement? So this is just a little chart that just highlights some of the headwinds that the county's dealing with and then what our strategy is moving forward. So one of the headwinds really quickly was inflation and just the economy, supply chain issues, all kinds of different challenges post-COVID. Really, these are the types of, of influences that the reserve is for, because they tend to be episodic, they can sometimes last a little bit longer than you hope, but sometimes they last a little bit, you know, they are shorter duration. So, but that's what we rely on the reserve for. And so the reserve has been helping us fund that, because as we know, inflation has been high. When inflation's high, that means the cost of doing everything we do, including, you know, personnel costs are also higher. And so that's the role of the reserves and it's been playing that role effectively. We have some other major systemic issues, and I've mentioned both, but one is the impacts of tourism, and this is legitimate. We had a study done by, by Eco Northwest, you know, that showed that a number of vital service areas are majorly impacted. And it's really around, you know, public safety, transportation, emergency management, to a degree, public health. But in, as, as just one example, I mean, a third of, of the folks that are in the sheriff's custody are from outside the county. And then those are folks that also go through the county courts system, which the county pays for, for the prosecution side, and we pay for all, all the facilities. And so there are expensive and, and non-revenue-supported services that the county is reporting, I mean, is, is, is providing. And so, you know, based on the Eco Northwest study, we're a community of about forty thousand, but there are times when we're a community of a hundred-and-twenty to a hundred-and-fifty thousand. And so the stress that that puts on our systems right now is not recovered through the revenue sources. And so one of the things we would like to have the, the legislature do is to amend the transit lodging tax formally to allow high-volume tourism communities more flexibility in how we spend those monies. Currently, for any of the new rates past two thousand and three, seventy percent goes to tourism promotion and thirty percent is discretionary. We would like to see more of that be discretionary while still contributing to the tourism promotion piece. Go ahead. I think there's a question.
Yeah, I know that some of the local mayors are working on this same issue. Are you working in conjunction with them?
I have had meetings with all the city managers and we've shared the legislative, yeah, concept, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next, and just as an example, for the impacts of tourism piece, what the legislative concept for the county was is thirty percent would still be dedicated to, to tourism and basically seventy percent would be discretionary, even though we said forty percent would be dedicated to the impacts of tourism. But for the county, just freeing up that forty percent for the impacts of tourism would be over a million dollars a year. And so I'm just throwing that out, that that's a significant, you know, revenue source, if we could get it. And this is not increasing the transient lodging tax. This is just redistributing what is already collected. redistributing what is already collected. And so, um, so we will see where that goes legislatively. Um, there's three other counties, coastal counties that fall into this high tourism um threshold and that would be Curry County, um Lincoln County and Tillamook County. And so we'll be talking to the coastal county um senators and representatives um as we move forward and see if we can't get a little headwind um or little wind behind ourselves. Uh, the next one is the timber revenue. I won't spend a lot of time on it. I think um most of Budget Committee and Board know where we are. There's ongoing conversations with the governor's office. There's been a commitment, but we're not sure what that commitment looks like. Um, and again, until the legislature does something, we're, we don't have any guarantees. And so, um, so we will see where that goes. I think there's another question, Mr. Ozier.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, um, I think government, uh governments have a pretty good idea to how to how to measure the direct effect of the loss of timber revenue. But how do you measure and are you able to take into consideration all of the indirect effects of lost jobs or or other types of of negative impacts that this would have on our on lots of county?
And that's a great question. Um, and what I would say is it's a lot harder for us. I mean, we do have general indicators of what some of those job losses might be like. And I don't know if Commissioner Thompson has any more information, but I know Coal PAC was um was gonna be doing a study about what some of those secondary impacts are um so that um so that we can understand those better. Um, uh as as part of the HCP, what the county asked of the governor's office was to not only address the revenue replacement issues, which is just, you know, direct payments uh to the county and the special districts and the cities. Um, but it was also to really partner with us on dealing with some of these secondary impacts, which are more economic uh the driven, whether it's jobs, whether it's sector impacts, um whether it's workforce training impacts. And so um, we made that request to the state. Um, we're still waiting to hear, but I think that the work Coal PAC does will help inform some of those conversations as we move forward.
If if I may weigh in on that excellent question because what we're looking to do is to reweave the fabric of community. It isn't just, as you point out, the direct income. It's the whole culture and we're told sometimes, oh, you can reinvent your economy as if it were a one, two, three and done kind of thing. If that were so, it would have already happened. But I appreciate the question and I hope that we carry forward with us as we deliberate, as we're informed and improved by the participation of the citizen budget advisors that we wrestle with this kind of issue as well as just the numbers. Thank you, County Manager. Go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you. If I, you know, I I will say, you know, in my previous job over in Washington County, you know, um, economic development back in the eighties and the nineties was a really big, you know, issue. And you look at what that county in particular had um in its favor, which it had oh, it had a large workforce, it had, it had property, industrial property, commercial property, it had areas to expand, and then it had land use um that was a lot more flexible because there's not wetlands, inundation zones, slide zones. Um, it's just a very different, and they have transportation that we don't have in including rail. And so, you know, Clatsop County is just unique in so many ways. And that uniqueness makes us proud and we're proud of the culture and and it and the heritage, but it also makes it a little more more complicated as we look at what is next? I mean, what what is the vision for what the next twenty years um looks like and what those economic factors are um as we move forward? Because I think we all have the same goals is we want family waste jobs, we want a safe, sustainable community. And so, um, and so then that's why I think the governor's office hopefully will partner with us because I think having all the regulatory partners at the table with us um will help. And then hopefully they could actually guide some very specific resources into the community to help us um implement whatever comes out of that strategy. Um, and then again, the other one is just jail medical. I won't spend a lot of time on that, but it's it's an ongoing challenge. Um, so when somebody comes into the jail, um, not a, not everybody's healthy, as you can imagine. Um, and some of the medical uh requirements are very expensive. Um, and so um, what we ultimately hope is that the federal government through uh Medicaid as well as the state through Oregon Health Plan will help us make sure that um the adults in custody get the care that they need. Um, but also help the local governments that are paying the bill for those services. Next, please. Okay, so that is my budget message in in a brief summary. Uh, Monica and Andy are gonna walk through a lot of the details um of the budget, but I wanted to take any questions about kind of what I have presented. Again, part of what I want to leave you with is that the county's not in a sustainable position right now. We know that. But we want to use the runway that the reserves have provided. And we have made some modifications. I mean, this year, there there's a reduction in some staff. We've been modifying our revenue mix, um, but it isn't sustainable. So twenty twenty four, twenty five is gonna be the time where we put different contingencies together. One contingency will be we get no help. How do we balance the budget with no help? And then off of that is we do get help. And what's the mix between revenue and expenditures to help us get to that sustainable place? So if I'm really thinking about it, we had to wait until this time because the HCP just moved forward earlier in the year. You know, the economy hopefully will eventually, you know, simmer down a bit. Um, and when I say simmer, I mean inflation simmer down, not the economy. Um, but um but you know, we needed to preserve the critical services that the county provides. And this is something that is conversations with the board, is conversations with the sheriff, is conversations with all of our department directors. I mean, this is a team sport. It's not just the county manager, it's not just the Board of Commissioners, it's all of us working in tandem to try to do the best thing we can. But twenty twenty four, twenty five is gonna be big. Um, and you know, we will have a plan to deal with whatever happens. We will stay above the board, you know, required reserve levels. Um, but I think we're all hoping that um the state will help us out so that we can provide the services and the service levels that the community needs. So so that's kind of my summary of the budget message. Um, I think Commissioner Toyoka might have a question.
Thank you, County Manager. No, you know, and I I've always remained hopeful, but uh in terms of budgeting, I I am pessimistic about the assistance from the state. I think since that Bionian process will, we might be top of mind for the through the first budget cycle. But after that, I think other pending, you know, highlights will will take over and you know, Clatsop County will fall to the wayside. So as we look at our budgeting processes, I'm more in favor of looking at of how do we help ourselves, you know, instead of relying upon outside intervention. But how do we internally take care of ourselves? And if we do get that extra assistance, then it's a bonus that we could look at. But I I would hesitant, be hesitant to say we let's factor in and rely upon that outside assistance from the state. Because I truly don't believe it'll be there in the long term.
Yeah, and thank you, um, C- Commissioner. And I don't disagree. I think that that, you know, we're gonna be hopeful because that would make a difference. And if if the commitment is for the long term, at least for the um for the TLT, just, you know, formula change and or for the for the um HCP revenue replacement, those are just foundational issues. But I think you are right that the county has to have some sense of manifest destiny and to do those things that are within our control. Um, and 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 staff will put those on the table as we work through this with the board um um and with others um through the year. Uh, because there are some things that don't require additional, you know, taxes on um on residents, but it's just how we approach and what other levers that we want to try to pull as we deal with some of the under, some some of the o- other intergovernmental revenues that the state gives us that may not be equitably distributed, that we might wanna chase down. Or it could just be how um how we engage in the fee structures of the county to make sure that the services are paid for um by the users. And so there's a lot of things that that we can consider. Um, and I think it 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 is gonna be a balancing act between expenditures and revenues. I there will be expenditure reductions as we move forward. Um, but I don't see that as as diminishing service and service levels. It'll just be things that we that we marginally do to help us right the ship. Um, at least that's my optimistic view. And if it doesn't turn out that way, the reality is we will do what we have to do, but we're gonna do it in collaboration with you know, with obviously the board, with the directors, the elected officials and with with our employees and our partners. Because again, when you do this collaboratively, we're all in this together. A strong county makes the community stronger. You know, strong cities make the community stronger. Strong special districts makes it it stronger. Strong business community makes it stronger. So we're all in this together, so.
Thank you, Don. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Andy now to kind of walk us through um the proposed countywide budget excluding the four districts.
Thank you, Monica. Uh, thank you, County Manager, for your comments and putting all this into context, kind of setting the stage as we dive into some of the numbers. Um, as you see in front of you, this is the uh the current proposed countywide budget less the four service districts. Uh, currently, the proposed budget is approximately ninety eight million dollars, which is about a million dollars less from from last year. Um, in consideration of the budget policies as well as the current economic climate and uncertainties around harvesting levels with the proposed HCP, they're an important factor in the development of the twenty four, twenty five proposed budget. The proposed decrease is primarily a result of the decreased materials and service costs and the amount of two point nine million dollars and is offset slightly by increased personnel services of approximately one point six. Most of those increases are associated with cost of living adjustments, healthcare and retirement costs. Of the twenty four, twenty five budget amount, twenty four point eight million is budgeted contingency compared to last year's adopted amount of about twenty six point three, which is approximately one point five million dollar decrease. And listen, Commissioner Thompson has a question?
I do, sir. Uh, to Mr. Ozier's cogent question, when we're uh predicting decreased revenue, it's such an inexact science, but do we have any capacity to estimate not just the loss in timber sale revenue, but the impact on job loss and company closures or other adjustments?
So I completely understand that. I guess that's a great question. I would be willing to say, and Monica, please chime in if you'd like. We don't really, you know, have incorporated what that ripple effect could mean within the community. Um, right now, the focus really is on what is within our ability uh to maintain services given the information that we that we have now. Monica, is there anything else on that?
Sure, I'll just add in from a local government revenue perspective in regards to the resources that we receive from the state. Um, that's the the businesses, if there are business closures and such, where we would see um the impacts from something like that would be on um property taxes. Um, people not being able to pay their property taxes. In in many instances, there are um bank loans. And so the banks are going to be covering those costs, so similar to what happened back in two thousand and eight with the recession back then. Um, many of the banks were making those property tax payments so that the properties did not go into foreclosure. Where we may see other expenses come from is oftentimes when people are unemployed. Um, they're needing um the Oregon Health Plan. And so we may see more utilization of resources such as um our public health department being able to provide some of the services that um many local healthcare providers um don't don't offer um at a at a more affordable rate. So the the revenue side of our resources is really coming from those property tax revenues and those timber revenues and then the state revenues. Does that help, Commissioner?
Thanks, Monica. Um, probably go to the next slide, I think. Thanks. So as we look at the personnel services, kind of over the the course of time and what we're proposing for twenty four, twenty five, um, our staff is our most important resource and they account for a little more than half of the countywide budget at approximately fifty two percent. Changes in personnel services include a decrease of three point four FTE from two hundred and sixty five point six and twenty three, twenty four and a proposed count of twen- two hundred and sixty two point two for twenty four, twenty five. Other changes to personnel services include increases due to an to an anticipated cost of living adjustment of approximately three and a half percent, as well as budget increases for cost of healthcare and retirement. In addition to that, within the county organization, there there are five union groups that represent approximately seventy two percent of the total FTE with management and unrepresented at approximately twenty eight percent.
Thanks, Andy. And I just wanna chime in here in regards to the decrease, um, the proposed decrease in FTE. These are not currently filled positions, so this is not a loss of a job for anybody. These are currently um positions that um are vacant and would be held vacant and um not budgeted for.
Thank you for clarifying that. As we kind of take a look at some of the proposed budget expenditures, um each category will will kind of touch on here. I'm not gonna go too in depth. Uh, as we look at the materials and services, the the decrease there is primarily due to an approximate one point six million dollar decrease in contractual services associated with the distribution of ARPA funds. And other savings are realized as a result of one-time program funding spend down or as a result of cost controls by various departments to realize savings. Through the special payments, there's a decrease by about ninety seven thousand, but overall, the expenditures there within that category are relatively status quo. For capital outlays, uh this de- the decrease there is a result of postponing facility renovations that were adopted in the twenty three, twenty four budget and forecasted over a three-year period to complete. Some of these projects include renovations of the Dwayne Street Annex to create more office space and alleviate space constraints in the eight hundred and eight twenty facilities. Until there's more clarification or clarity from the state around the revenue replacement for the county to address financial impacts associated with the implementation of the adopted HCP, staff is delaying uh moving forward with this extensive uh capital project. And you'll probably hear that common theme as as we're going through the rest of these areas. Uh, transfer transfers are increasing by about two point four million over the prior year budget. Uh, that increase is related to an increase of ARPA funds to the special project funds to address the aging infrastructure in the courthouse and the eight hundred eight twenty exchange facilities. Um, anybody's not aware, we have we have elevators in each of these buildings uh that reach their useful service life. And to ensure that AD access, ADA access is maintained, we need to have significant improvements made. In addition, uh, there's also an increase in the transfer from the general fund, stabilization fund to the general fund. Uh, this transfer is necessary to reflect a balanced budget per ORS two ninety four. However, it is anticipated to not occur. County management will be monitoring expenditures closely and making mid-year adjustments as necessary to minimize the nec- the necessity of the transfer. Lastly, for the contingency, uh, the the decrease there is primarily associated with the decrease to contingency associated With the general fund stabilization transfer. As we shift gears and we're looking at the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five revenue. Uh, the increase in revenues mainly contributed to the projected increases in state revenue of about one point four million. There's also an increase in other intergovernmental revenue of nearly eight hundred thousand from Road District Number One for county road maintenance construction and from Rural Law Enforcement District. For enhanced services in the unincorporated areas of the county. Some of the other areas we're seeing some increases are in interest revenues. I've also seen an increase of about half a million dollars over the prior year. And all these in, most all these increases are offset by decreases in, in charges for services of about one point three million dollars. Which is primarily contributed to the restructuring of the fleet management role within Public Works. From there, we'll shift and just looking at the general fund as a standalone. Again, looking at general fund revenues. General fund revenue is expected to see an increase of approximately two point six million. This is primarily due to increases in transfers, state revenues and other revenues for a cumulative total of approximately two point five million. Licenses and permits associated with transient room tax revenue are anticipated to increase by approximately a hundred and sixteen thousand. The transient room tax revenues are collected and utilized to promote county tourism, provide pu- public road and drainage improvements. Jail operations and discretionary allocation for general government activity.
I see Councilor Montero has a question.
Um, on the, um, on the revenue transfers in, is that a transfer in from contingency funds?
So I would say the, the lion's share that transfers in is referring back to the uh, general fund stabilization transfer to, to make the general fund whole for the year?
And I'll just chime in on that. So as he, as Andy previously mentioned, per budget law, we do have to balance the budget. And so while we budget a contingency of ten percent of our total expenditures. Very rarely does that contingency get spent, but we still have to balance to it. And so that is the purpose of the general fund stabilization transfer. So as he mentioned, um, the likelihood that that transfer is gonna take place is pretty slim.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
Um, excuse me, Andy, I just, if I could, uh, Commissioner Thompson, if you don't mind. Um, I just wanna explain a little bit more about the revenue stabilization fund. So this is a fund that, that we set aside as a special fund. That does have general fund resources in it that we just set aside as part of our reserves. Um, and it grows every year uh, minimally by um, by the interest earnings um, that it's er, um, earning. Um, and so when you think about the reserves for the county. It is the, part of the ending fund balance includes this other fund, which is the revenue stabilization fund. So I know it's a little awkward when, when we talk about a transfer from the general fund. Um, fund back into the, you know, from a special fund into the general fund. But it's all general fund discretionary resources. We're just using it to get to the balanced budget, thinking that that transfer's not gonna be made. So I just wanna explain a little bit about how that works. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. So moving on from revenues, we'll be looking at the general fund expenditures. Um, as we're kinda looking at the different categories, the personnel services, which includes salaries and benefits are, are increasing in the general fund from the current year by approximately one point five million. Or about six percent. And although there's an overall decrease of one point six FTE in the general fund. This increase is associated with cost of living adjustments to employees. Uh, wages by about three and a half percent, as well as budgeted rate increases associated with healthcare, retirement costs and other payroll tax increases. An increase of six hundred and thirty thousand is seen in the materials and services budget. And this is primarily associated with a Criminal Justice Commission's ODOT grant expense in the amount of five hundred and eight thousand dollars. This is gonna be used to purchase and implement a new computer-aided dispatch and record management system for all county law enforcement and fire departments. There's also an increase of about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in general liability insurance, as well as an increase of nearly two hundred thousand dollars in contractual services. Based on anticipated inflationary increases for contracted services. These material and service increases are offset by savings and various organizational use as a result of cost controls by departments to realize savings. As I think Don and Monica both mentioned, this is a, a team effort and everybody's looking for savings as we're, as we're operating. Uh, touch a little bit on the remaining categories here, uh, special payments.
Andy, can I, can I ask a question? I, I was, I'm a little, I've been confused reading the budget. Are we planning to do the courthouse um, security upgrade this year? I know it was budgeted for last year and not spent, is that, is that gonna be spent this year?
I can touch on that, Andy, yes. So um, that will be discussed um, in the special um, special projects fund. Right now, we're just talking about the general fund. Um, but that plan is to move forward with the courthouse security. The only portion of the capital projects that we postponed are the Dwayne Street Annex, which is the former jail.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Monica.
And I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt Andy, but um, and I don't know if this is what prompted your question, um, David. But in regards to the Criminal Justice Commission's ODOT grant expense, that is um, what the county manager was referring to in regards to the record management system. So though there is a five hundred and eight thousand dollar expense, it is offset by that grant revenue as well. So if you wanna go ahead and carry on, Andy, sorry about that.
You're fine, thank you. Um, we kinda left off at the special payments category, we're seeing a decrease of about three hundred and five thousand. This is a result of decreased transient room tax dollars to be used in twenty-four, twenty-five for public road and drainage improvements. In an effort to build reserves in anticipation for a larger safety project in a future fiscal year. Some of the decreases we're seeing in the transfers and the amount of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand is, is a, is a result of not transferring excess timber revenues into the special projects fund. For some of the reasons that we've already touched on. And contingencies, uh, contingency is gonna increase by about eighty-four thousand, which is based on board policy that ten percent of the general fund expenditures be reserved. In contingency, therefore increased expenditures results in an increased contingency amount. So the twenty-four, twenty-five general fund proposed budget includes use of unaside general fund balance in the amount of approximately three point six million excluding contingency. By including contingency reserves set aside in the general fund stabilization fund, along with the general fund contingency. The projected forecast for the proposed budget maintains an overall reserve balance of approximately thirty-six percent. Recognizing current economic factors as well as future impacts of reduced timber harvesting levels. Management took a balanced approach to maintain sustainable growth and continue to work with the board and staff. To develop strategies to address alternative revenue streams while continuing to be cognizant of spending down reserves. And contingency funds that could impact long-term sustainability. Acknowledging as previously mentioned, that these reserve balances play a critical role in maintaining service levels. And I think to expand on the fund balance topic a little bit more, I'll hand it back over to County Manager Booth.
Thank you, um, so um, board members, budget committee, just wanna go a little bit o- over this graph. We tend to show a graph that depicts the fund balance over time. And so this graph has a lot to it, but we're just trying to play some of the scenarios that we've talked about as part of the budget message. Um, so the fund balance with the HCP reductions that we would anticipate is the blue line. So just with the HCP reductions, if there's not revenue replacement. If we don't have TLT, that's the blue line is where we would be. Now granted, this doesn't take into consideration all the other decisions we would ob- obviously make to make sure we don't ever go under that line. Um, but this doesn't factor in all those other decisions. It just shows you kind of a straight line impact of what that would look like based upon assumptions. And so then we add in what, what it would look like with the revenue replacement, and that's the gray line. So obviously, the revenue replacement from the state for the HCP would make. A discernible difference in what that line looks like in those outer years. The conversation has been looking at the ten-year average. And so that's, that's what we factored into this um, spreadsheet. Then we also added, okay, what if we had um, revenue replacement and we got some of the flexibility on the TLT? That we talked about, then that's the yellow line. And so, you know, if we got everything that we were asking for. That puts us in a more solid position. Again, it's still gonna require some expenditure reductions and some other revenue adjustments. Um, you know, one thing that we haven't talked about is the strategic investment program that was approved by the board and by the Oregon. Business Development um, Council recently um, that will also start impacting the general fund favorably and. And other special districts. And that'll really start in the twenty-five or twenty-six, twenty-seven um, fiscal year. Um, but um, Wana Mill, Georgia Pacific is making a hundred and fifty-two million dollar investment into their plant, which is obviously good for the county for those family wage jobs. Um, but we haven't factored those, those revenue sources um, in those out years. So um, so that will have an, an impact too. But this just basically shows that, you know, obviously, HCP revenue loss would be significant without replacement. Replacement gets us better and if, if we can get our entire legislative agenda um, passed, we would be in a better situation, so.
County Manager, do you see that Gretchen Allen, and I'm not sure if it's Gretchen or Clara who has the, the question, but a hand is raised.
Sure.
Um, your graph is different than what's in the book. Is it possible to get a copy of this, Clara and I were noticing that, um?
Yes, we can definitely send this out to you. This was something that um, we made an adjustment to, um, because we did just include what it would look like if we had um, just the revenue replacement. But since we are having these conversations around the TLT replacement as well, um, or, or adjustments. We wanted to, to provide you with this additional information, so we will go ahead and send that out. I also just wanna add to, if you'll notice, and we only go back to fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Um, so you can't see in prior years when we did face a recession. But you can see in the current fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four where we do spike up. But now we're going down in this twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. And then you do see a steady incline based on those forecasted inflationary costs. So we are, we are, as Don has mentioned multiple times, we're forecasting out status quo um, staffing levels. Um, as well as programs and services provided. But as we have more clarification, you will see those decreases go down in future years if we aren't able to um, maintain the rev- or. Provide revenue replacement in the way that we are hoping to receive it.
Thank you, and Gretchen and Clara, Budget Committee, we will make sure you get an updated graph immediately after, let's get that out to you. As we look at the uh, some of the key assumptions for the general fund and just kinda reiterate what's already been said here, the, this, this theme of status quo budget, it's gonna be repeated. Um, but that, those are what, what drives these, these key assumptions. Uh, the twenty-three, twenty-four adopted budget included the best assumptions available at the time and projected expenditures were expected to exceed new revenues. And was adopted assuming the use of approximately five point four million in fund balance. However, current estimates for the adopted fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget indicate that general fund expenditures will come in slightly less than budgeted. And will assume an approximate use in fund balance between one point five and two million dollars, which is good to see. As we look at the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five general fund budget, uh, this budget assumes a six point nine million dollar use of fund balance, which includes contingency. Of the proposed expenditures, three point three million is set aside for general fund contingency in accordance with board policy. And based on that information, as well as prior year history, the forecasted use of fund balance for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal years estimated to be closer to one point three or one point six million. So as we're diving into um, the, the functional areas of the county. So there are five groups of functional areas and we'll kind of touch on each of these. Uh, I guess just kinda by definition, the functional area can be defined as a logical grouping of activities or processes of an organization. Representing similar business goals or functions. Each functional area includes the proposed budgets that comprise the functional area and greater detailed information of the county's individual budgets can be found under each of the functional area tabs. The total proposed county budget, which excludes county service districts, is approximately ninety-eight million dollars, which represents a decrease of about one point, about one million dollars uh, from the previous year. For the functional areas overall, the budget is decreasing slightly. Uh, these expenses are included in the functional areas of general government and land use, housing, transportation. Economic development and capital and are offset by increased personnel costs distributed throughout all the functional areas of the proposed budget. With the greatest increase being within public safety and justice primarily due to having the, the highest number of FTEs at approximately a hundred and twenty-five. Though there is a proposed countywide reduction of about three point four FTEs. With ongoing increases associated with cost of living adjustments to employees' wages, as well as budget increases for cost of health insurance and retirement. These items present ongoing challenges. And while there are many challenges for our county as an organization faces. Is through the collective efforts with our partner agencies that we identify many opportunities through the board's strategic planning process that will continue to be addressed and have been accounted for in the proposed budget. So as we kind of look at each functional area individually, uh, for culture and recreation. Uh, this group includes areas such as the fair and expo, parks and maintenance, and parks, land and acquisition. Uh, the increase of approximately three hundred sixty-two thousand is mainly contributed to an increase in materials and services, as well as contingency within the fair and expo budget. These funds are primarily dedicated with only approximately eight percent that are discretionary. As we look at the land use, housing, transportation, economic development and capital functional area. Uh, this area includes surveyor, roads, bike paths, planning, building codes, fisheries. There's a lot of uh, areas underneath this umbrella. Um, the decrease in capital is a result of postponing facility renovations that were adopted in the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And forecasted over a three-year period to complete. As we've mentioned before, uh, until revenue replacement has been identified from the state as a result of the reduced timber revenues. Staff is delaying moving forward on these projects until better information is obtained. The dedicated resources include video lottery dollars that are to be used specifically for economic development within Classip County, as well as tax monies that are dedicated to county roads. Most of the remaining funds that make up this functional area maintain a status quo budget. There's an overall proposed decrease of one point six five FTE within this functional area, all within public, all within the Public Works Division. And it's mostly a result of not filling the Public Works Assistant Director position.
So I have a question here. Um, this appears to be the largest decrease in um, expenses. Um, and I, my concern is, uh, we're in a time when housing is um, a dire issue. And with the reduction in timber revenues, economic development should be firmly in our minds. Should be firmly in our minds how we're going to pursue that. Um, so um. How are we going to balance all this? Um, I I'm concerned that if you're. If you're taking away staff. To help do things with permitting and housing and and you slow that all down, we're only going to make our other problems worse.
So I'll touch on this, Andy. So as he mentioned, this functional area includes a significant number of programs. And the decrease that's being proposed, the the one point six five F T E. That's all within public works. And so this is specific to road maintenance and construction. And so part of that is um when we went through the hiring process of a new public works director, we previously had an assistant public works director. And we won't be filling the assistant public works director position. We do have other management staff and they have a plan moving forward to make sure that there is um coverage in those areas. But it's not necessary to fill that vacancy. Also, there was previously a um a halftime position that was budgeted. Specific to completing some projects in the fiscal year twenty three, twenty four that is no longer necessary moving forward. And then the point one five is actually a cost neutral. Um, that was an over reporting of F T E. It was a Scribner's error in the twenty three, twenty four. So though it says point one five decrease in F T E, there actually was never um that that position. Didn't didn't actually exist. In regards to the two point two million dollar decrease, this is again specific to the work that is around the um Duane Street Annex that's being post. Postponed. So economic development work um is continuing to be moved forward. That work is funded through those video lottery dollars. And so as long as we have those video lottery dollars. Um, to maintain the service level that we're providing, which is what we anticipate in twenty four, twenty five. Economic development is not being impacted by these reductions.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks for clarifying, Monica. Okay, so moving over to the the general government functional area. Uh, this area includes the budgets for the Board of Commissioners. County manager as well as the budgets of county organization units whose activities are of a general government nature. Most budgets in this area are status quo, with the decrease primarily being the result of decreases in materials and services. For contracts associated with the distribution of ARPA funds to various agencies countywide. This functional area indicates an overall increase of point three F T E. During the twenty three, twenty four uh adopted budget, the board approved the unbudgeted hiring. Of a housing manager to address the board's strategic planning goal around housing. Um, the overall increase of point three F T E. Reflects a decrease of point five F T E for the current vacant management policy analyst position. As well as a point two five F T E decrease in the senior administrative supervisor position.
And I'll touch on this a little bit more as well. So. Um, though it's showing a point three, again, the housing manager position is a position that's currently being funded. Through um ARPA dollars as well as emergency order twenty three dash oh two. To address um our homeless uh population as well as our um our housing development. And so that is not being funded through general fund dollars. Um, that point three is offset, as Andy mentioned, so we have been holding a position vacant now for a couple of years. And this is in regards to um. A position that would be providing uh property management as well as contract management. And then we also have a existing position that is looking to reduce their F T E. And so rather than um trying to fill that, we're gonna just maintain those service levels with the staff that we currently have.
Thank you. Okay, moving into. Functional area of public health, uh there's an increase here as primarily a result of a five hundred forty three thousand dollars in pass through funding for contracted. Mental health services. This increase is offset primarily by a decrease in school-based health center funding. Operations of this program have been transferred from public health to Columbia Health Services for more efficient service delivery and is therefore no longer run through the county. There's also a decrease of one point nine F T E within this functional area. Of that one point nine, there is one F T E that is being moved under the direction of Emergency Management Office within the Public Safety and Justice Functional Area. The remaining F T E was for a disease intervention specialist, which the state eliminated funding for. Thus, the position was eliminated. And looking at the public safety and justice. Again, touching on some of the F T Es, there's proposed F T E decrease reflects more efficient scheduling of part-time employees and. And will control or I'm sorry, it looks like uh. Gretchen may have a question? Or Clara, one of the two?
Yeah, um, the school-based funding, can you say again where that went away, the funding for that went away, or is it just funded from somewhere else?
I can touch on that, Andy. So that was funding from the state. And um the program did not go away. That's a school-based health center based out in the Jewel School District. Um, for more efficient services, that is now being contracted through a different agency. So the Public Health Department is not providing those services, so therefore we don't receive the funding for it.
Who is that different agency that's doing that?
Um, it is the Columbia um. Columbia Health Services.
Okay, um, it says that it's been transferred from the public health. Oh, never mind. Sorry, I was reading that wrong. Never mind.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, hey, coming back to public safety and justice. While there are no new F T Es being requested, there's a program shift that moves the emergency preparedness program under the under the direction of. The Emergency Management Office. Where the F T allocated to the program will be reflected. This is ongoing work to create a more coordinated disaster response in court in accordance with the board's strategic planning goals. So that does cover all the uh functional areas. And I believe at this point I will hand it back over to Assistant County Manager Steele to. Go over the service districts. Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Andy. Um, before moving on, just wanted to touch base to see if there were any questions over um what was just presented. Doesn't appear to be any. So moving on to our service districts. And so um there's primarily an increase um in this uh for all four service districts. And this is primarily attributed to the increase in personnel costs associated with the rural law enforcement district. So this district, um they provide the um. Expanded services for rural law enforcement personnel um that are paid for out of the enforcement division as well as marine patrol. And then it also um is an increase in the budgeted transfer. From the General Road Fund into the General Road and Maintenance, General Roads Maintenance and Construction Fund. The Rural Law Enforcement District, as previously mentioned, this is cost share, so the personnel costs are split between um. Rural Law Enforcement District as well as the General Fund. And this is seeing an increase of two hundred and thirty eight thousand. As previously mentioned, the theme, this is primarily associated with those. Um, COLA increases as well as um healthcare and PERS benefits. Uh, in addition, there is a slight increase in uh capital outlay. To cover some of the specific equipment that uh rural law enforcement provides, such as a um side-by-side vehicle to go out and do search and rescue work on. The district um is seeing a slight increase as well. The funds from this um. District are transferred and received into the uh road maintenance and construction. And this is supported by a property tax levy of one point oh one seven five per thousand. And is supported by timber revenue. Um, I forgot to previously mention that the Rural Law Enforcement District is also supported by a tax levy. And is also supported by timber revenue. So uh both of these um will also see the impacts of um reduced revenues from the H C P. Uh, this budget is seen a increase of about six hundred and sixty thousand, and this is a result of. The projected beginning balance being slightly higher. The Westport Sewer District is one hundred percent supported by user fees. Um, there is a slight increase in this uh budget as well. And this is a result of ongoing infrastructure improvements that um are being supported by the ARPA funds. Um, they have been working on this in accordance with their community plan. And um have been utilizing some of those community plan dollars as well as these ARPA dollars. To make these infrastructure upgrades, which um makes it so that um this service area does not have to see um significant rate increases. To pay for these ongoing costs. And the final um. Special district is the four H and extension district. This one is also supported by a tax levy. And also supported by timber revenue. So the county contracts with O S U to provide these extension services. And so um when we get into the functional area and we're speaking specifically to this budget. You will see it as all primarily listed as contractual services, and that is again because. O S U provides these services. Their focus is to provide research-based knowledge and education to strengthen communities and economies and sustain natural resources. As well as promoting um healthy families and individuals. Um, the F T E that is supported um through O S U by these um dollars is approximately three point four seven positions. Um, it consists of one point nine eight for admin support, um one F T E for educational program assistance and point four nine. F T E for a master gardener educational program. They've seen um. A total increase in expenditures of approximately a hundred and eighty seven thousand. But this is a result of increased contingencies because they've actually seen a decrease in their um personnel costs. Because they've had a number of um long-term employees retire, and so there's reduced costs um with those. Those new positions um salaries that are being filled.
I I have a question on the four H.
Go ahead, Tina.
Um, what is their responsibility or interactions with the four H groups throughout the county?
They're actively involved with them. They have regular um four H leader meetings. They are the ones that kind of help. Facilitate um and provide that support to those leaders when they're looking for information and such.
And do they charge those four H clubs for um for their services?
No, they do not.
Okay.
There may be fees um for different programs that they might have to, but but that's not necessarily um a four H and extension fee. It's a fee. For the program to to cover the cost of something that they might be trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
So um, this is just kind of a breakdown for the countywide budget in regards to discretionary versus dedicated resources. So general fund discretionary resources um are identified throughout the budget as general fund support. Um, for those special funds that might receive general fund support. As well as just um general fund for the organizational units um that are that are one hundred percent general fund supported. Such as the county manager's office, H R, I T, those internal service functions as well as the jail. Um. Twenty six percent of our revenues are discretionary and the other seventy four percent is dedicated. Um, it is important to note that um while almost all discretionary resources are received in the general fund. Not all general refund um resources are discretionary. For example, the grant that the um sheriff's office received. For the records management software that is received in the general fund, but it is dedicated um funding. So. Of our total budget, approximately twenty eight point four million is discretionary and a hundred and eight. A hundred and nine million is dedicated. Um, and this includes the four service districts that we have. Just checking to make sure that there's no questions there. So um. As Dawn mentioned, and I'll just kind of kick things off and then kind of turn things back um over to him to conclude this. But as we've been speaking throughout the theme of this whole budget message. That um the goal that we are trying to accomplish is to really try and strike that balance between. Meeting our current several service levels, um demands and maintaining prudent reserve levels. Um, knowing that there are going to be some potent potential um revenue impacts coming in the future. Um, we continuously monitor on a daily basis all of the departments. Um, where those um external factors um might be impacting us and how we can pay make prudent adjust. Adjustments mid-year. Um, for example, those vacancies. In some instances, if it is not an immediate need, we will be maintaining vacancies. Um, and in some instances, it might be as si- as simple as um a person is uh retiring or leaving the county at the end of the month. And rather than um anticipating that and starting the recruitment process when we know they'll be leaving. We will start the recruitment process after they leave, holding that position vacant a couple of months until we go through that recruitment process and the new person starts. Um, so we will continue to look at where those cost savings can come. As mentioned, the um postponement of the Duane Street Annex renovations. We will look at ways and we already have where we can alleviate some of those space constraints that departments such as public health. Um, have been facing and how we can utilize existing spaces in a little bit more um outside of the box way. So that might be converting some conference rooms and creating office space out of those. Um, until we have more reassurances in regards to the revenue replacement. Um, I want to thank all of our staff, all of our department heads, the Board of Commissioners, the Budget Committee. Everybody who has put in many hours of hard work to comprise this budget. As we mentioned in the beginning, this is not a couple months process. This is a year-long process. And specifically, the development of this budget document um is a six-month process. Andy has done a fabulous job of coming on and mid-July. And uh learning the county's systems and processes as well as some of the um impacts that we're facing. And also dealing with an audit at the same time. So he has done a great job of trying to. Learn everything while at the same time producing a um important document for all of you to be able to review. And uh again, we're just thankful that we all have the opportunity to serve our community. And want to see it strive um to be a better place for everyone to live. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you. Uh, there's a couple of questions before Dawn chimes in.
I had my, here's what I'm interested in knowing. When we're looking at these prudent adjustments, are we looking at the impact on services delivery? I mean, how is that calibrated?
Yes, that's that's one of the things that's being taken into consideration. So in some instances, we might not be able to maintain that. And so those are conversations that the departments are having with the county management team. So that way we aren't impacting service levels. Is it is? Is it a situation where there might be other staff that can help out, such as the vacancy? That we're gonna hold the point two five F T E vacancy that's gonna be in the county manager's office? Where can we as staff um pick up the additional duties that might not be able to be met um by having that um? F T E be uh not at a full F T E.
I appreciate that reassurance. Thank you.
Uh, Gretchen and Clara.
So um I just had a question about where you're having somebody leave and then you have a two-month period gap. They come on without the support of the person that was there before.
Um, you know, that creates a lot of inefficiencies and sometimes even costs more to train that person. Um, have you taken that into account? Because um that to me doesn't seem like much of a cost savings if you have inefficiencies.
We do take that into account. And again, it's, you know, where we can hold those positions vacant, we will be. Many of our departments are cross-trained. And so though that person might be leaving, um, it's, it's a small department. And so many of the staff are already familiar with covering some of those duties and assignments when the person is out on vacation. Or sick or whatever the case may be. So it is something that staff from a management level will evaluate on a case-by-case basis. And I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you, Dawn, for any closing comments that you might have.
Sure, um, thanks. I want to thank everybody again to spend the time with us. Um, you know, I think that. Um, there'll be some interesting conversations as we move forward into twenty four, twenty five, pre- prepping for the twenty five, twenty six. Budget, one of the things, um, we had put a list up early of, of what those required services are that the county. Provides. One of the things that will be on the table though are, are there services that the county is providing on behalf of the state? That we might want to choose, meaning the board might want to choose to give back to the state. Um, cause there, there are services that certainly benefit from local provision. But unfortunately, sometimes those services also don't pay for themselves. And so part of what we will be looking at is where is the subsidy that's coming from the uh general fund? And just looking at all of our options very openly about what's the best way in a sustainable manner to move forward. Um, and so I'm only sharing that because all things will be on the table. Um, and we'll have a long list of options with various degrees of impact. Um, and we will quantify that for, you know, for the board um as we move forward. Um, and again, hopefully, we don't have to do as deep a dive on some of the expenditure reductions. Um, but we'll be prepared to do that, so. So that's all that I have. I just want to thank everybody for your time. Um, and I want to thank staff um for their diligence through this whole process. And all the department staff and the elected uh officials. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dawn. Um, so before we uh wrap things up with any questions and final thoughts. Just a reminder of our next budget meeting, which will take place on Wednesday, May eighth. This will be a hybrid option. It will begin at four P M. And so there will be um a Zoom link available for you if you choose to per- participate virtually. But it'll also be taking place in the Boynton Building. And so you are welcome to be in person there beginning at four P M. This meeting will take place. Um, the first portion of it is specific to the um, the, the four special districts. Which you as a budget, as the um lay budget committee members. Um, you all are, are not necessarily, necessary to be present for the special districts. We do encourage you to be there um. Early on though, because if we do move through those um special district budgets relatively quickly. We would be able to move on to the countywide budget. Um, and so that next budget meeting again is from four to six P M. Any questions or final thoughts prior to us letting you all go for the rest of your afternoon?
Well, all right then, it appears that um we did have a full complement of commissioners. Cause even though it says Monica Steele, I'm pretty sure that's Commissioner Webb. Um, glad everyone was here. Thanks to the, the lay budget committee members, your service is invaluable. As, as we go forward in this to improve, to inform, to really expand our scope and our effectiveness. Thank you for your time and your commitment. I think that's it, right?
Yes, thank you, commissioners. Thank you, committee members.
We're adjourned.